Oh, here. What's that? Oh, is there anyone here too? Are they synchronized?
They're both at the same time.
Are they atomic clocks?
Yeah, we no longer have the excuse of, well, that clock.
Okay, so it's atomic, is that right? Be careful, how would you glow in, yeah, at night? Yeah. What's that? I've never had that happen once. That's what I'm talking about.
Did we answer any other questions?
Why worry about plumbing any of these places? We build new bathrooms in Cinelet.
Is this a new?
Okay, looks like everybody's kinda arriving and running a little late today. We were looking at some lovely, uh, new interstate road sign designs, so I'm sure that stuff will be posted on our website probably at some point, Jason, so at-home players, feel free to go look those up. And, okay, we'll go ahead and kick off the December 1st, 2014 meeting with a call of attendance.
Mayor, Householder?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
At this moment, all who are able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moves us into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of December 2nd, 2014, as Giving Tuesday in the city of Salina, Kristi Balthazar, Salina Area United Way Board President, will read the proclamation.
Great.
Hi, I'm Kristi Balthazar, Ruth Vernon, and I'm going to be reading it for you guys. Don't judge me too harshly because I've never done this before.
Okay.
Do I just go for it?
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
If you don't judge us too harshly, we'll, we'll...
Okay, stop me if I do it wrong, okay? Okay. Um, the Giving Tuesday proclamation, Giving Tuesday was established as a national day of giving on the Tuesday following Thanksgiving, whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy and volunteerism where people give whatever they are able to give, and Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community, and think about other people, and it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service in the city of Salina, and Giving Tuesday is an opportunity to encourage citizens to serve others throughout this holiday season and during other times of the year. Sound good?
Keep going.
Keep going. I know it sounds weird, we always think it sounds weird too.
Okay, okay. Now therefore, Aaron Householder, Mayor of Salina, does hereby proclaim December 2nd, 2014, as Giving Tuesday in the city of Salina, and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in any way that is personally meaningful, and witness thereof or whereof, hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed the second day of December, 2014.
Great.
Does that sound good?
Mine says the first, but, it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm just making sure. We need a new copy of this.
Whatever day today is, I guess it's the first, isn't it?
Okay, well, what events do y'all have planned for this?
It's a social campaign, and so online, we just use the hashtag GivingTuesday and the hashtag Unselfie to just kind of share what we and other community members have done throughout the year to give back in a way that might not be traditional such as like monetary, but maybe they volunteer or they, you know, sing to old people or something like that.
Sure. What, um, what is the website and where can they go to see this?
They can go to GivingTuesday.org, or they can visit our website at UnitedWaySalina.org.
UnitedWaySalina.org, okay, great.
Is this just a, is this a national?
This is a national one. This is the third year that the, like, the national campaign has gone, and this is the second year that, uh, United Way has participated, and I know that, like, um, the Senior Center and Circles of the Heartland and several other nonprofits around town are participating too.
Great.
I like the sing to old people idea.
Maybe that wasn't the best example.
Not a bad idea.
Thank you.
Hey, I've got your signed proclamation here, we'll give you this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that little "I" here in Householder is a little weird sometimes, isn't it?
Okay, great. All right, well, this is a time for our citizens' forum, this is an opportunity for anyone to bring anything before the commission that they would like, uh, to bring to our attention. Uh, we just ask that you give your name and address. Okay, that moves us on to, uh, consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of November 24th, 2014. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 14-7156, consenting to the assignment of a portion of the development agreement in connection with the Lambert Sedition Tax Increment Financing District from Salina Investment Partners LLC to ARCP MT Salina KS LLC.
Is there an item on the consent agenda that the commission would like removed or amended? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as listed.
Second?
Motion is second to approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and that takes us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 14-10758, formalizing the property tax exemption for Salina Vortex Corp's building addition located at 1725 Vortex Avenue.
Ordinance number 14-10758 was passed on first reading on November 24th, 2014. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'd bring it back to the board for possible action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number 14-10758, formalizing the property tax exemption for Salina Vortex Corporation's building addition located at 1725 Vortex Avenue.
Second?
Motion is second to approve on second reading ordinance number 14-10758. Any further discussion? If the clerk will please call the roll.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Mayor, Householder?
Aye. That motion carries 5-0.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 14-7158 and Resolution Number 14-7159, establishing the urban functional classification system and the urban boundary lines for the city of Salina.
Mr. Stack?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As part of the, uh, moving ahead for progress in the 21st century from the Federal Highway Administration, National Highway System, uh, in conjunction with that, KDOT has had to go through this, uh, state highway system as well as a lot of roadways in, in urban areas around the state, and has asked, uh, the cities to reclassify some of these streets to a certain category that allows them to, um, be funded and be designed in accordance with kind of the past, um, way we've done business here in the state, and I guess this happens about every 10 years where the, with the census and looking at, um, streets and highways and traffic volumes, um, to develop a new urban area boundary as well as new functional classifications for the streets. So, I've attached what they sent us, and it's really hard to kind of explain on a one-page blue sheet, but at least there were some, they gave us some, basically some, uh, KDOT kind of summarized what these, what this, uh, resolution will do for us. Basically, it seems like it's, um, I was trying to think of what the summary is, to, um, it isn't really changed anything that happens for us, they're still, you know, arterials become minor arterials, I think is what they, and then minor arterials become major collectors, doesn't change a whole lot of what, what the city would do as far as, uh, what we call the streets and what we use them for, so it helps us in, in design if we had to design a, a certain arterial, we don't have to design it to certain highway standards, I guess you'd say, and I know that's, that's kind of a, in a nutshell, summary, a layman's summary of not having to, um, have a really high, um, design standard. Mostly, it seems like it's been driven somewhat by bridges, a lot of bridge inspections around the country now have to have higher inspection standards on highways, well, that makes sense, but for interior, um, cities, they have this, uh, the similar, it's a, it's a element-level inspection, and it costs a lot more, and in Salina and most cities, we don't have, you know, huge truss bridges that span large rivers, and so we don't have to go through those kind of, um, detailed inspections, and that's just for bridges, just as an example, that we will be able to continue our business, status quo, do our inspections, we'll do our designs based on the, the design that we've always had, so anyway, that's, I'm trying to summarize what I believe this means and what, what I understand it to mean for us, and KDOT has just asked us to approve these new classifications and the new urban area boundary based on the 2010 census. So I'll try to answer questions.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Yep, and, uh, Mr. Stack, I may have misunderstood this when I read it, the person, was the list of changes suggested by KDOT or by?
Yes.
So not by Salina?
Not by staff, no.
All right, and there is any, uh, disadvantage of these streets not having the higher designation as far as, uh, ability to apply for funds to repair or, 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 does it impact any daily use?
Doesn't seem to, we have the, um, Federal Fund Exchange Program that we've kind of participated in, uh, state funds come to us the same as they always have, so it's, they didn't, the way we understood it from the KDOT planning group is that it's going to continue to be the same. Uh, yeah, that's what I know as far as, and it, there's a list here of the ones that changed, for example, you know, it, it cleans up some of our streets that have changed over the last 10 years, for example, Cedar Ridge, you know, 10 years, 10 years ago was Cloud Street, so we took Cloud Street off and now Cedar Ridge, and Cedar Ridge is now the Collector, basically, so it cleans up some of those things as well, but it makes a lot of our principal arterials become minor arterials, and that had some, that's the way that all the cities around the state are reclassifying their roads, and that helps us with, um, state and federal funds, so that's, it's hard to, you know, map, the feds changed, I don't know if they changed rules or they make different rules, but either way, KDOT is our, is helping us, we hope, in all those, in all those ways, and keeping us in line with what's needed, what needs to happen.
So is there any disadvantage of no longer having any principal arterials?
Did not seem to be, no. No disadvantage. Just trying to figure out the, did, in this first part of the, um, adjusting the functional classifications, have we re, has the state reclassified what constitutes certain, a principal arterial versus a major arterial, or, or are those all consistently the same, and we've just basically changed the classification, um, based on their change, or based on just that they're no longer, they no longer carry the same use? Does that make sense? I guess what I'm looking at is two things, one is that we're changing the classification, and it doesn't seem like the use has changed, I mean, if you look at the, the chart that you gave us of all the different, like, Ohio, uh, from Belmont to East Wayne, uh, Belmont East Wayne to I-70 is now a minor arterial, it used to be a principal. Right. Which seems like a down, would it be fair to say that that's a down grade, but over the years, that's probably gotten higher years? Correct. So, is it that the, that the classifications have changed, so that's why we're changing our classification, or are they, have they, have they statewide lowered a standard, and so now Ohio doesn't meet the standard of a principal arterial? Which kind of goes to my second question, and that is, is that since this is a pass-through federal funds through the state, and we would get 90% roughly of that, and it looked like from the report that within these reclassifications, the state hasn't said that we'll probably receive the sa, you know, we'll receive the same amount, but not any increase that the state would receive. Um, so is this, is, is this, I guess my question is, is do we know what the real reason for having the reclassification is, is it? Commissioner, let me rephrase if I can here. Uh, do we, are we sure this isn't an end-around by the state to reduce classification of roads to avoid giving us state funding? Right. Is that what you're saying? Yeah, asking, yeah.
Getting something for nothing.
So, Dan, when you look at the list, let's say, uh, minor arterial to a major collector, we have quite a few of those streets, uh, are those major collector streets still, uh, able to garner the same type of funding as they would under the prior classification system? I believe so, and I can just go back and ask them that, and that's a good question. I'm reading and trying to rephrase what they told us, based on their letter, and so you get a lot of, they met with us and talked to us about this, and it was a little hard to really understand, what are we doing this for? And so, um, but it looks like it gets done.
Maybe this may be it.
Well, and it gets done every 10 years, so, okay, this is the normal process, but this year, it seems like, what are we really doing here? So anyway, what they've said in their letter is, um, basically, federal legislation added, uh, to the NHS, which is National Highway System, as a result of juris, of legislation, added a whole bunch of roads, principal arterials, basically, added them to the National Highway System, and I'm just reading what, the letter that I have in your packet here a little bit, just to, there are certain requirements associated with a route being part of the NHS, which could result in increased cost to the owner, and so they've identified this and said that we feel like that as a city, you should reduce those from a principal arterial to a minor, or is it, whatever the word is? To a minor arterial, that way you can design them and utilize them in the same fashion as before, but your question goes back to basically a minor arterial to a major collector, does that hurt our funding? Because we get funding for, from, um, from the state for federal fund exchange dollars, and so I don't know if there's a limit if you can't use those on a collector, I'll have to find that out, that's a good question. Commissioners, with that, uh, would you like us to go ahead and postpone this if, if the timing works for a week, so we could try to determine if there could be any funding impact? Now, in the end, it might not make a difference because the state will probably look at a certain way.
Not like we're going to say no.
But it would, it might be, it might help you to know what the answer to the question is.
Yeah, I suppose for informational purposes, but, I mean, what's the result of us going, no, we're not going to accept this?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Well, we'll find out.
Yeah.
I guess, we may not, we may want to keep our principal arterials to a minor arterial, so that, but we may not want to make our minor arterials collectors, that may be something that has, you know, we may have to look at that a little further, but we can come back, it is, you know, when Kent and I did this last week, it was a short week, and we thought, well, this doesn't look too hard, but the more we looked at it, it's, it's a little harder to understand. It's presented as a housekeeping item from the state.
It is.
And if you notice in the correspondence, they did not make reference to qualifying for funding, so that's probably why, we probably should dig a little deeper, ask the question, and see if there's an impact, and then you know when we bring it back. Good.
Sounds good. It may be one of the ways the state is looking to save money.
Oh, I'm sure, he's the first man.
You get a little worried about that sometimes. You know how the answer this week and the answer next week might be too.
Might be two different things, so, that's right. So do we need to motion or anything?
Table or postpone, is that how you do it? Uh, yeah, probably a motion to postpone to, should we be able to get that answered, Dan, by next week? Oh, yeah, for sure, because they're asking for this by the end of this month, so they're wanting us back pretty soon, so they'll be, they'll be able to take my call this week. Is it necessary to open for public or not?
Well, might as well, since it's in front of us, I suppose, might, might as well. Anyone from the public here to speak on this issue?
Thank you.
Okay, I didn't think we would, but they're here, just in case, there's one person, so, so we just need to motion to table this until following week?
A motion to postpone until the next regular meeting on December 8th. Mr. Mayor, I move that we postpone item, uh, 7-2, uh, Resolution 14-7158 and 14-7159 until next Monday, December 8th, 2014.
Second?
Motion is second to postpone Resolution Number 14-7158, 14-7159 until December 8th, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0, and they'll come back to that next week.
Item 7.3, Resolution Number 14-7157, authorizing the mayor to execute a construction manager at-risk agreement for the Salina Fire Station Number 1, second phase improvements, project number 14-3041.
Chief Mulligan?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, I'm Larry Mulligan, your fire chief, and this is our, uh, second step toward completing the second phase, if you remember, we've already done the first phase, which is select an architect for this project, and to date, we have been very happy with the results of that selection, we've had numerous communications with those folks, and, and we really need to bring the construction manager on board now, and, um, we had three companies, uh, come in and, and give us, uh, their qualifications and apply for this project, we decided, uh, to go with Bus, Boom &amp; Raw, and that's who we're recommending, who's, which is a local construction company here in town, but I've got to tell you, I didn't do the lion's share of the work of this, it mainly is Keith Circe from Frew and Aaron Martin from the City Attorney's Office did almost all of the work on this, um, I couldn't help with the blue sheet and some ideas, but, uh, they did all the work, and I think did an outstanding job, if you read every word in this thing, God love you, it's a long document, it really is, and...
We all do, every week.
Yeah, it is a long document and stuff, but, you know, interestingly enough, one of the contractors, uh, that came in to see us, uh, was a construction company from Wichita, Conco, and Conco's a pretty large construction company, they were wanting to branch out and move into the Salina area if possible, and this looked like a good project for them, but what was of interest was, uh, the representative that was here from Conco, and during the interview process that we had with them, uh, Keith, of course, asked several questions, but during that discussion, he says, you know, I think in 10 years, this construction manager at-risk process will be the predominant way that public projects are, uh, done, or how they're built, how they're let, and how they're done, because it just makes so much sense to bring on the construction company, have them work collaboratively with the architect, uh, to cut costs where they can, to be efficient where they can, and to where everybody's kind of on the same page from the very beginning, and there's no misunderstandings as far as what the end product's going to be and what the expectations are, and like I say, so far, uh, we've been very pleased with that. I do want to take just a second, if I can get Mike to help me here, and draw your attention to the screen, I wanted to show you what we're working with from our, uh, architectural firm, uh, this is basically just the outside of the building, you see the two new apparatus bays on the other side of the hose tower, that's the area that we're talking about that will be new. It's interesting to me to note to, as I was looking at this, to think about the fire service, this building was built back in 1950, and the doors on the la, on the far right over there were kind of standard for the day, and this is almost a model of what the fire service has gone through in, in 50 or 60 years, and the doors moving toward the left get bigger, and finally, the doors on the left in our new section is the standard size for apparatus doors today, because our equipment gets bigger, uh, every so often, and, uh, those are the standard today, and I think that, uh, to have them come in and, and help us construct this project, which will serve this community for the next 40 to 50 years, and I think that the commission that approved this initially, uh, in the first phase to start with the living quarters, um, had that idea and approach, that we want to make an investment in this property and, and have it around for 40 or 50 years, because it's in a good location, it's a good building, the firefighters today are very happy with this first phase, their living quarters and things of that nature, what we need to do is plan ahead, because in the future, the chief officers will make some decisions about whether to move apparatus into Station 1, give you an example to that, we had our last ISO evaluation about two, three years ago, and ISO, the insurance services organizations, they're the ones that rate the city, with, with a, uh, ISO Class 1 is the very best fire department or fire rating you could have, it's not really all fire department, it's really about half-fire department, 50%, 40% is on the water department, 10%, 10% is on dispatch, but, uh, anyway, number, to have a Class 1, there's very few communities like that in the country. We were, uh, and have been for a period of time, a Class 3, and, um, we had an opportunity to move into Class 2, we missed a Class 2 by about half a point, if we would, um, had the opportunity to move our aerial truck around, it adds a little bit of additional staffing to it, at some point, someday, you may want to move our aerial platform down to Station 1, and it would fit in one of these two new bays, if you have the, the financial capacity to staff that piece of equipment, we would achieve an ISO Class 2 rating, and there's only 15 departments in the state of Kansas that have that, uh, many of the departments that have it are much newer communities, suburb areas of Kansas City, Johnson County, and things of that nature are Class 2, um, but it has a real benefit to that, so these are long-term investments, and when you have a ISO classification that drops down, it saves fire insurance money, uh, for people who pay fire insurance, it's more conducive to businesses moving into your community to look at the overall fire protection capability of the community, and so it has a lot, a lot of benefits. This is the side of the building, I got to thank Mike too, the deputy city manager, for helping me with this, because, um, show this to you, because I didn't have anybody else come to help me, and, uh, when you look at the side of the building, on the side, you see the letters, Salina Fire Department up there right now, you know our new sign on the front, it gets all kinds of kudos and things, because it's backlit, and it's really bright and that sort of thing, what these are, and we actually have Salina Fire Department, we don't have the number 1 on there, the architects didn't know that when they put this together, but these are the original letters off the front of the building, we have those out back in a storage shed, what we're trying to figure out is how can we remount those letters on the side of the building that faces 9th Street to save them? When Gary Gleason of Gleason Signs came down to look at building a new sign for us, that would be, that would be a real focal point for us, and I, like I said, I think that our new sign today on the front of the building really is, we took Gary out back, and we showed him these letters we had out back, and he looked at it, and he goes, he goes, "These are amazing," he said, "These," and they, they've been painted about, I don't know, 10 times maybe in their lifetime, he said, "These are porcelain letters, this, these letters are metal, but they've been porcelainized," he said, "You could take the paint off of these, and they'd be back to their original condition because they're porcelain letters," he said, "They're, they're very expensive to do," he said, "It'd be a tragedy if you lost these letters," and so we're looking at an inexpensive way that we could remount those letters and save those on the side of the building that might be visible, uh, from 9th Street as you round the corner, something like that, so, they're looking at that idea, that's why that is the way it is, I don't know any other place to use them or to put them, but I think they're a great historical kind of thing that the community could preserve at very little cost. But that's the side view, the back view here shows the doors coming in the back, and they're drive-through bays, they run the full length of the station, one of the things I like about this design, what I hope the construction manager, uh, works with the architect, uh, is the traffic flow upstairs getting, getting the, um, firefighters from one side of the station to the other side of the station, and down the equipment and out the door, and that sort of thing, we've already had some of those discussions, and, and we've had the captains involved, and, uh, they've gone very well, I'm very pleased with, um, the interaction with everybody and willingness to look, this, one of the things that's inside here, I don't have that slide today, uh, because it's under development, there's a mezzanine that is created, uh, right above that entrance door, there, to the left of the two overhead doors, there's a mezzanine that's created there, and on that mezzanine, uh, they are going to put several small access holes, and what these are is, fire departments today generally will design training facilities inside of these buildings that they can use even during inclement weather, what these are is, they're holes built in the mezzanine area that's normally covered, they have a cover over them, but if you want to do confined space training or things of that nature, you can pull the covers off, and you lower people down through them, and so you can conduct training operations inside the station even during, uh, inclement weather, and it makes a lot of sense to do that, because it really doesn't add to the cost, but, uh, we're really excited to have Bus, Boom &amp; Raw be interested in this project, we had a chance to visit with them, uh, I can't, uh, I can't speak highly enough of their interest and the jobs that they've done, when we did the interviews, and like I say, Keith facilitated those, uh, they're looking forward to a very good project. Our, our, um, action is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign this contract with Bus, Boom &amp; Raw, and of course, the second option is to tell us what else to do with this or how to move forward, and we'll take whatever direction the commissioners ask them, any questions that you have, we'll answer those, we, like I say, we have Keith here and Aaron Martin here, and...
Okay, any questions for staff?
Just a comment, and, and the question would be, uh, you mentioned this is step two, and that we have the architect, we have step three already too with Frew, uh, being the, our city rep, I mean, in this whole thing, so this is pretty much the last piece, and we're, we're ready to roll.
Right, yes, it is. What, what will happen is they will come together, the architect and the construction manager at-risk will begin to work through this and start putting the pieces together, they will go out for bids, and the construction manager will, will get the price of the project, we'll go back and, and look at what we think we can, how we can do this, how we can trim costs, and we'll bring back that to you when we're ready to roll.
Right. And, and just to comment too on, on the process, and, and just to reinforce what you said, I, I too am very pleased that we're able to have a local, uh, extremely qualified and quality contractor, uh, to do this, uh, very important, uh, project in, in the, in the downtown area, and, uh, certainly is a property of the city that, that we're all very proud of and, and think highly of, so, uh, I, I think that this, uh, and agree with you also, that I think the CMAR...
So, uh, I, I think that this, uh, and agree with you also that I think the CM, CMAR process will probably take over the design bid build, uh, entirely, uh, for public work projects as, as it has, uh, over a lot of the country. But, uh, I, I really think that we're, we've set ourselves up to have a really nice quality pro, project and I, I'm really pleased that you're going to be able to be the, the fire chief while, while this, uh, while this, uh, project is going on and that we're, uh, represented, I think, extremely well by Frew, uh, in this process. And, and I look forward to, uh, to a successful remodel of this project and thank you for the work that you've done.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone from the public get a comment on this issue? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution number 14-7157, authorizing the mayor to execute a construction manager risk agreement for the Salina Fire Station Number One Second Phase Improvements, project number 14-3041.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt resolution number 14-7157. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. And that takes us on to development business.
Item 8.1, adoption of findings and conclusions in support of the governing body's November 24th, 2014. Discussion to deny special permit application number SP 14-3 filed by Ideatech Telecom LLC requesting approval of a wireless communication facility and the public right-of-way for South Marymount Road abutting the property addressed as 887 East Ridge Drive.
Do I just need to read the background on this or do you have anything different for us today?
We didn't anticipate anything formal. Mayor, it reflects the findings made last week, but in the form required.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, following a public hearing on November 24th, 2014, the governing body articulated certain findings of fact and voted 5-0 to deny Ideatech's application, which was before the governing body upon the filing for a valid, I'm sorry, of a valid protest petition, following the approval of the application by the Salina Planning Commission. Under applicable law, decision to deny the application must be in writing according, accordingly, legal counsel was directed to prepare written findings and conclusion support of the decision consistent with those articulated during the public hearing for formal adoption by the governing body. Um, do we just need to get a motion to adopt these findings then? Okay. Is there anyone here from the public wants to comment on this? Okay, I bring it back then for discussion or possible action on the part of the commission.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the proposed findings and conclusions in connection with the governing body's denial of special permit application number SP 14-3.
Second.
Motion is second to adopt the findings and conclusions in support of the governing body's November 24th, 2014 decision to deny special permit application number SP 14-3. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 5-0. It takes us to other business. Anyone have any other business?
I'd just like to make a comment in the other business and this is to, uh, the development services and, and, uh, in regard to our, uh, commission information memorandum